Morning, committee members and members of the public. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. Ms. Kadetsky or Ms. Baggy, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Barnhart?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
I am here.
Ms. Crable?
Now I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to make the same motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes.
Ms. Barnhart, did you make the second?
I made the motion and you seconded to approve the agenda.
Okay, alright.
But so, did we approve my request to vote on them together and not individually?
There was no second for that.
Did you ask for one?
I said any further discussion and there was, there was none.
Well, if you said any further discussion, that means we had to have had a second.
It died for lack of second is what I was wanting to confirm.
So, we have the approval of the agenda and we move on to the approval of the minutes. Any discussion with the minutes as presented?
Yes, in the, in the very beginning, under attendees, we have Ms. Pat Bradford, Board Vice Chair listed and at that time she was not Board Vice Chair anymore.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes with that adjustment.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion and second on the table is to approve the minutes with the amendment to change from Board Vice Chair under Pat Bradford to Board Member. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The minutes pass with those adjustments. That brings us to the start of the policy updates from New Hanover. And the first one on the agenda is 7205. And the board had approved to give students some speaking time, so. But first, before you guys come up, I do want to say I apologize in how Tuesday went. I'm looking forward to hearing from you. And with that, your representatives are welcome to have the floor for the next five minutes to discuss this policy.
Alright, good morning, everyone. My name is Aparna Billypala. I'm a junior and a Student Voice Ambassador. And first of all, I just wanted to say thank you all for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. So, these past few weeks, Student Voice has been engaged in an initiative to collect a comprehensive sample of student opinions on Policy 7205. And we're excited to share our results with you today. To get started, we wanted to discuss our method of collecting data. First, ambassadors randomly selected students in their class to interview in order to get a variety of perspectives. Then, they would ask the students if they were familiar with Policy 7205. If they weren't, the ambassador would show the student the policy and if they had time, play them the video clip of the board meeting where the policy was discussed. They would then ask the series of questions. What is your age, grade, and class? What are your thoughts about Section Z? Do you like Section Z? If not, do you think it should be taken out? And why? The ambassadors would then record these responses and we consolidated the data onto a Google Sheet where we analyzed the main reasons that students were in favor or against the policy. We were able to collect over sixty interviews from five different high schools and three middle schools. So, as you can see on the first graph, forty-two percent of students opposed Section Z entirely, eighteen percent had selective concerns about certain points, and thirty-three percent of the students were in favor of the Section Z entirely. On the graph with the reasons students were in favor of Section Z, there are three main categories: unclear, neutral class environment, and preventing discrimination. Students whose responses fell under unclear said they weren't sure about why they supported it or did not provide a reason. Students whose responses fell under neutral class environment focused on the goal of creating a classroom atmosphere free from personal biases. Their responses generally supported the idea that the educational setting should be a neutral space where there is a balanced and impartial learning experience. Finally, students whose responses fell under preventing discrimination emphasized the policy's role in safeguarding against discriminatory practices in education. They generally supported efforts to ensure that all students are treated equally and fairly and that no group is portrayed negatively or stereotypically in teaching materials and discussions. However, while nearly every student agreed with the intent of the policy, the majority of students either had concerns about parts of Section Z or opposed the section entirely. In their interviews, these students brought up three main concerns. The first category of concern is related to educational integrity. The students whose responses fell under this category emphasized the importance of covering historical events in their full complexity and opposed certain stipulations of Section Z that might lead to omitting or oversimplifying significant historical narratives and discussions. These students were most concerned about Points seven, eight, and eleven in Section Z. One student, one high school student who fell under this category said that, quote, "The wording of Points seven and eight in particular is questionable as it disregards the United States' history of slavery, the roles that racist ideologies played in the formation of the country, and continued issues of systemic racism," end quote. Several also acknowledged the importance of having uncomfortable conversations, with one student saying, quote, "Ignoring our mistakes from the past will only open up room for error in the future. Students need to be taught the truth about our country and its history, whether good or bad," end quote. Some students in this category also pointed out the more short-term consequences of Section Z, namely the fact that this policy could restrict the nuanced conversations required in classes like AP US History, AP World History, and AP Human Geography. Regarding this issue, one student said, quote, "Student teachers should be able to teach in a way that best benefits the students and prepares them for end-of-year exams," end quote. The second category of concern fell under analytical dialogue. The responses that fell under this category underscored the importance of fostering critical thinking and open discussion in the classroom. These responses supported engaging students in thoughtful debates about complex topics, encouraging them to analyze, question, and understand diverse perspectives, which is an important skill, not only as students in the classroom but also to prepare us for the real world. Students whose responses fell under this category were concerned that Section Z could potentially limit these discussions. One student whose concerns fell under this category said that discussing issues around the founding of the United States, quote, "Fosters empathy, critical thinking, and a nuanced understanding of contemporary issues," end quote. The last category of concern relates to professional autonomy. Responses that fell under this category highlighted the need to trust and respect teachers' professional judgment and expertise. These students advocated for allowing educators the freedom to choose how they present curriculum content, discuss sensitive topics, and navigate the educational needs of their students without undue restrictions. One high school student said, quote, "Teachers are here because they care and want to educate their students, not to indoctrinate. So by putting language like this out there, we are putting the wrong people under fire," end quote. Based on our data, our recommendation is for the board to review Points seven, eight, and eleven and reconsider as to whether these are necessary to be included in the policy because the majority of students surveyed took issue with these points on the basis that it prevents student exposure to important historical concepts, limits opportunities for critical thinking and discussion in the classroom, and prevents teachers from exercising their professional judgment and expertise. We hope you'll take this information into account as you continue to discuss Policy 7205. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to what we have to say and please let us know if you have any questions. As always, we sincerely appreciate the work you do.
Committee members, any discussion with this particular policy? Like to open? Ms. Bradford?
Policy Z seems to be a concern for you, so let's talk about that. Number seven, number eight, and number eleven you listed? Number eight is particularly interesting for me. The United States, this, this Policy Z says, "We won't teach these things. We don't want our teachers teaching these things." So, you object to us asking teachers, telling teachers?
Ms. Bradford, keep it to the policy, please. Please don't refer to you. Please talk about the policy and keep the comments to that. Thank you.
The rule of law, excuse me, the rule of law does not exist, but instead, a series of power relationships and struggle among racial groups. The United States, number eight, the United States was created by members of a particular race or sex for the purpose of oppressing members of another race or sex. I, I take, I take, I take strong issue with that. I think, in hindsight, we really did a disservice to our students when we did away with civics and teaching about the Constitution and teaching about the Declaration of Independence. And so, I am, am, am appreciate the fact that you put so much energy into looking at it. But, the school district tells us that we're not teaching these things. The school district tells us we're not teaching these things. This is just making sure that there's not someone out there, one lone person or five lone people, teaching these things, so.
Ms. Bradford, I'm not an expert on what the school district is or isn't teaching. I was just here to report what the students were concerned about with this point in the policy.
And we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Crable?
Yeah, to Ms. Bradford's point, I wanted to ask, you know, Dr. Fason, so, we're not teaching civics and we're not teaching the Constitution and we're not teaching the Declaration of Independence as Ms. Bradford has thrown out there? I am talking and asking a question. I'm just repeating, okay? All I did was repeat what she said.
I, I appreciate asking Dr. Fason the question. Just ask directly, please.
I did.
Thank you.
Yes, we do teach the Constitution.
And the Declaration?
And the, yes, of course.
And we have a civics course?
Yes, we have civics.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Did you have any other?
The, yeah, the, I personally don't think that we need Letter Z. And I just want to be clear that I understand, when I was listening to some of your comments and reading some of the, the articles where you had given interviews, you said that the reason that we have policies is because they're based on laws. And this is not based on any law because that has not passed in both chambers of our General Assembly. And, we, it's really basically just a compilation. Everything up until Letter Z, if I am understanding correctly, is just a compilation of human resource policies. Is that correct? Okay, so, those, and I would like to see all of those referenced in the cross-references, every one of these, because some people are still confused that we have new things being imposed upon them. And if we look at some of the other policies that we're going to discuss today, the, they do have the references. And I remember at one meeting, you know, I was told that would be way too cumbersome to put in all the policies, but I think that it's important. If it's important in one policy, it's important in another. So, if we agree that we are not doing what Letter Z says and it is not required by law, I don't think that we need to put this, I, I feel like Letter Z is an intimidation factor. And it's putting students, I'm not students, it's putting teachers on notice that if you say something that's on this, one of these things on the list, that you are going to be in trouble. And I am afraid of what that trouble might look like. And I don't want our teachers' professional judgment being called into question, being doubted. They have professional development through our department, through HR and through curriculum and they, they know what they're supposed to be doing. And I just see Letter Z as an intimidation factor. And I don't want it in there. And then I do want in cross-references to every policy that this compilation is.
To that point, Ms. Crable, it does list a few different cross-references, so which ones are not listed that you would like to see listed? Because it has staff responsibilities, workplace relations, staff-student relations, workday and overtime, and school safety are listed in there, so.
That's, that is true. So, I wanted to ask Dr. Barnes, are there any other policies that are on this list that we should be including? So, I didn't, I mean, I start, I was Googling it, you know, and trying to search, but there's a lot of policies out there.
We've gone ahead and done a cross-reference, so, and I can't say through our analysis that except for Section Z, they are all cross-referencing other policies.
All of these are all ones, okay. Alright, then I'm, I'm good with that, as long as we've got them all covered. And if I'm not good with Letter Z at all?
Thank you. Committee members, if you remember last month, this was held in committee because there was additional feedback given by a few board members and I forwarded to you that, the, the agenda had already been posted, to allow us some time to have some further discussion. With this policy and this compilation, it's trying to outline the expectation for our staff. In Section Z, not only does it talk about teaching in the classroom, but I would, I would read this as it would be able to be applicable to the professional development that we require of our staff as well. And you're going to see two other policies that the Curriculum Committee has been working on, 3200 and 3210 as well in this committee. One of the biggest things in the district is we talk about flexible fidelity for our staff. And in order to do that, we have to outline the expectation. And so, when we, when conversations with different board members and, and staff says, "How can we do that?" while outlining that in policy. So, to be able to outline an expectation is simply just that. It's to be able to say, "Here is the standards of expectations. We updated our policy, what, two months ago?" Just to outwardly talk about teachers are not allowed to transport children in their cars. It's not trying to be an attack, it's setting an expectation for all. And so, the reality is, there was something called a quality review checklist. And it was approved-
We're not talking about 3200, we're talking about this one.
Thank you. Point well taken. In previous policies, there has-
So, are we going to stop talking about it?
I said, "Point well taken."
Does that mean that we're, we're done?
I'm not, I'm not done with my, I said, "Point well taken." So, I understood your point and yes, I agree with you. But the reality is, our staff does have to ensure that our teachers are in line to what they're supposed to be doing. And so, looking at further policies, and I can talk about those down the line, there has been metrics put in place in a reactionary way when a teacher oversteps boundaries of things. So, to have a policy in place that proactively lists things, I don't think is a bad thing to do. Talking with fellow board members, there is a variety of individuals who would like to see more in depth to this particular section, some who do not agree with it at all. But outlining the expectation is something that's trying to get everybody on the same page and can be very direct with what the expectation is here in New Hanover County. With that, this has already gone before the board as a first reading, and so I would make a motion to bring this as, as written for a second reading to the board. Second?
Discussion?
Further discussion, we have about one minute, Ms. Crable.
First of all, I'm, I'm, I have never heard us talk about flexible fidelity, so I'm not sure who the "we" is and I wanted to get more information on that. And then also, too, if we're talking about outlining expectations, this only seems to be outlining expectations of a certain topic. There's a lot of expectations that we have of our teachers and of what we can and cannot do, and I don't see them listed in, I don't see some of those topics in there. So, I'm just wondering why we have to go overboard on this particular section when we, we already have other policies that cover it, talking about, you know, the Parents' Bill of Rights and the, some of the things that we can talk about as far as, you know, gender and things that we can't talk about before Grade Four, you know, those kind of things aren't listed in here. We're really only talking about government. So, I don't think that we need it here, and if you think that we need it, then perhaps it is better covered in one of our curriculums so that our teachers and the Curriculum Committee can address that as other districts across the state have done. They have, they have looked at some of these kind of things we're talking about and incorporated them into their curriculum policies and not as a human resource policy. So, if you could briefly explain flexible fidelity and then we can be done. I'll be done.
Thank you. We have reached our time on this policy. There's a first and second on the table to bring this forward to second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
That will be passed to the board, 7205 for second reading in February. That brings us to Policy 32-
As presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Without taking out any-
3200, which is the selection of instructional materials, and then subsequently will be 3210. Dr. Fason, I know this poli, these two policy has, have been revised over the past few months and received a lot of input by our staff and our Curriculum Committee, so I wanted to allow you to talk about specifically 3200 now and then, and in just a few moments, 3210, to provide some input for where the justifications are coming from.
So, thank you. So, actually, we did have, this policy was with our Curriculum Committee and we had a number of teachers and principals on that committee along with Mrs. Bradford. And we reviewed this policy for quite a while. And what we did was, we looked at other policies, our policies, and mainly, we outlined things to make sure it was clear for our parents and teachers. So, basically, a lot of the changes that you will see are reorganizing the information that's in the policy. It was also, some word changes were added and suggested by Mrs. Bradford that we implemented controversial texts and complex issues, and we outlined some definitions. So, those are the main things in this policy. And I will be happy to answer any questions about this particular policy.
Committee members, any questions or comments, Dr. Fason? Ms. Bradford?
Reading over it during the weekend, I noticed one reference to general statutes without the GS in front of it, so that's a housekeeping thing. But in reading it, noting the general statutes, I, I, I came to the conclusion that on a number of places, I think I have four or five and we can go through them, but where it says things like, the selection process, look at the top of page twenty-five in the, in the draft text. Where it says, everything, where it says things will align with standards, state standards, I wanted to insert "and" the general statute, state statutes. And there's four or five places, so that everywhere it says state standards, educational standards, have it also align with North Carolina State statute law.
Ms. Baggy, would you please scroll down to page twenty-five? It's the top of page four of the policy. Ms. Bradford, could you share with everybody watching and listening specifically? You referenced page twenty-five, which is number four in the policy.
Yeah, there's a number of opportunities there.
I have them listed, Ms. Bradford, if you'd like some help with that.
I, I think I'm good. At the very first paragraph, the last sentence, "Educational standards," also just insert there, "Align with state statutes." Then, then, under that A, same thing, under that B, same thing, under F, same thing, and then going into supplementary materials, there's another option. So, and then there's one more in, on the top of page twenty-seven. And what I do with formatting is I just search and replace or search and add, everywhere it says standards, I would add, "North Carolina State statutes." It's a housekeeping thing in terms of having to pick out every single one of them, but, and then there was one, there was one or two that had a typo that just didn't have the G period, S period. So, I was like, what is this referencing? And then I realized what it was.
Ms. Bradford, I guess my, are North Carolina state standards have to go by state statute? So, I guess I would ask why and, and then the next thing I would ask is, are we asking to do that throughout the entire policy document where our state standards are referenced? But to be clear, you're just saying in these two policies, not throughout every policy in the manual?
Can I make a comment?
I was like, Ms. Crable and then Dr. Fouse.
Dr. Fouse, if you want to go first, go ahead.
Two clarifying questions. Because we follow the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, I'm not sure how the, the general statutes align because it's typically, you have general statutes which are made up in General Assembly and then you have the North Carolina State or DPI which creates the North Carolina and is voted on by the, the, the General Assembly. So, not every, I guess I'm confused, I don't know how we would do that because it would just be written there, but that may not be, so it may say, I don't know if there's a general statute that says logarithms will be taught in Math III. But we use the, the North Carolina Standard Course of Study to guide us through that. So, I don't know, I think we would have to do some more investigating on that before we actually put that in here because you have, again, like I said, you have state statutes which requires to teach, but then you have North Carolina Standard Course of Studies which actually guides the curriculum that we follow through in our case and guides that the teachers and our staff follow every single day. My-
Excuse me, it's not your turn yet.
My other question would be on, under B, objectives for selection of instructional material, under four, under B. To provide materials, resources representing various points of view on controversial slash complex, can we say what controversial is because that's subjective?
There is, yeah, we wouldn't say that a lot. It's in 4B.
Can I have a chance to talk?
My memory has it that people on the committee did want controversial to stand by itself because it's somewhat vague in their opinion. Look for explanation as to what it was, as they're looking at their principal and they're looking, if that would help them understand controversial.
And I'm going to jump in and let Ms. Crable join the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. So, in the email exchange between Mr. Vogel, Josie, and, I don't know if it was Josie, Ms. Bradford and Josie, you had said that you wanted the state statutes in, after everywhere it said standard course of study. You did not say that you wanted after educational standards. And then also, Mr. Vogel had made a point, one can imagine a scenario- And then also, Mr. Vogel had made a point, one can imagine a scenario in which a newly enacted-
Let me, let me interrupt, let me interrupt, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Vogel, I'm half the floor. Can I have the floor? I'm sorry.
Perhaps we shouldn't reveal attorney-client privilege communications, Madam Chair.
Yeah, this is not attorney-client privilege.
So Ms. Crable, continue your commentary, please.
Okay. So where we said, we would imagine a scenario in which a newly enacted state statute has not been embodied into the standard course of study, or that perhaps the standard course of study is inconsistent with the state statutes. So I guess, when I was looking back at, at our policy development policy, it was talking about, we count on the folks sitting over here at this table and Dr. Faust to keep up with the laws and with North Carolina State of Course of Study and advise us so that we aren't behind. And we have had several policies where we have been, we have been in, in the loop, but we roll it over. So I'm, I'm feeling comfortable that we do not need to have state statutes in there. And so when she, when we talked about standard course of study on page one, three, four, and six of the standard, I mean, of this policy, that's where we have standard course of study. So I went through and I looked at all of those. And then, Dr. Faust, to your point, we had a very lengthy conversation, because controversial was not even in there at the time, and they decided they wanted complex and controversial because they mean two different things. And so they, they tried to cover them in there with what controversial meant and what complex meant. So that was a very lengthy discussion that your department talked about, you know, for almost the whole meeting, to make sure. And in fact, one of the handouts that we even evaluated, they had the wrong definition for the wrong, for the, for the word that they were, that this handout, this new handout that Ms. Bradford had brought to us. So I just, I think that we're overstating, it's, it's just a matter, if, if it changes, we're going to do it, because DPI does it.
Well, if it, we have to.
To Dr. Faust's point.
We, we, we actually have to. I mean, everything that we do is got it by the statute and which is the standard course of study, so the state is aligning. I can never see a time, and I know maybe Mr. Vogel knows of a time, I could never see a time that the North Carolina Standard Course of Study would not be in line with what general statute says.
Well, Mr. Vogel, I was going to give you the opportunity to weigh in about that, because I'm curious if we need a little bit more digging, some of the instances that Ms. Crable was talking about, if there are potentially discrepancies between the two, then how would that, if they're both in our policy, how would that align?
No, I think the, the inquiry was whether to include that phrase, you know, "and state statutes." And, you know, certainly DPI, when it puts together standard courses, student, North Carolina Course of Study, it does so in a way that is consistent with its mandate from the, from the General Assembly. But what if the General Assembly gets ahead, I suppose? I suppose there, there's that type, you know, potential scenario, gets ahead and, and passes a statute that's so specific and before DPI has a chance to revise course of study. The Board is in its discretion to have a policy that, that takes, takes account of that, that says we, you know, we ensure that our instructional materials adhere to the North Carolina Course of Study and state statutes. If you're asking, Madam Chair, about a scenario where the, the two, two conflict, I mean, you know, that's something that's, you know, I mean, I guess we can come up with all sorts of hypotheticals, what if, what if? I'm unaware of, of that, you know, being, you know, status quo, and, you know, any current situation where that's the case. But it is possible, I suppose. But this all goes to whether, you know, the Board, you know, the Committee can add, you know, those words, you know, "and state statutes." And the answer is, as a legal matter, yes, yes, you can. Now as to, you know, why would you want to, or whether you should, I defer to the Committee.
Thank you very much. Committee members, we have reached our time on this. After hearing the discussion and feedback, what I would like to recommend is I would make a motion to move this forward before the Board, and also to potentially allow the Curriculum Committee to kind of look into what Ms. Bradford brought up about adding that language and what that would look like if that changes things for this policy. But I would be comfortable with moving this forward to the Board at this time.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? So that will be moving forward to the Board in the top left corner with no changes, thirty-two hundred. And that brings us to thirty-two-ten, parental inspections of and objections to instructional materials. Again, Dr. Faison and team have been looking at this and getting feedback and updating things to streamline the process. So with that, Dr. Faison, I'll let you take over and kind of share about where some of the changes were coming from.
Sorry. So here again, we wanted to make sure our process was streamlined and clear for our parents, so here we added some language, and we also added in about parent, the Parent Bill of Rights, our process. We also added the form name, and we're also going to link the form so parents can have that form for, if there are some questions for reconsideration for something, and that is the process to actually challenge or have a question about some material. And then the possible outcomes, we outline, and I'll just bring your attention that there are four possible outcomes at the school base, the district, at the board level, and they are, take no action at all, and this is if someone were to actually challenge some material, take no action, remove the material, place the material at another gray band, or regulate the availability. I would remind the Board that, those are, I'm sorry, the Committee, those are the four actions that can be taken at each level. So, and then the appeals process, of course, it goes on at the district level, and the actions at the school level, the district can always review and look at those policies. So anytime there is a school committee and they challenge or look at a book, our district level is aware of that, so they can always do or look into this at a greater level. I would also, as we think about this, please keep in mind that our media coordinators, there are a number of books that don't even make it to our circulation, because they review and process and look at all the different materials that are put in circulation prior to being admitted. And I'll take any questions.
Ms. Crable?
So, again, Ms. Bradford had suggested that we put "and state statutes" after State Board of Education requirements, and the only place I saw that was in the first paragraph. So since it's not in here in red, I'm assuming, I would, would prefer that it stay out for the same reasons that we did with Policy thirty-two-hundred.
Madam Chair. Ms. Bradford?
There's actually two, one in the first paragraph on page thirty, and in the second page, two possible outcomes, there's a reference in the second chapter there, or just the paragraph there.
So you are saying considering for the Committee to consider State Board of Education requirements and general statutes?
Mm-hmm.
And the educational goes-
Or however you want to word it, North Carolina State statutes, general statutes, whatever that references it, yes.
And my point was, if we didn't do it in thirty-two-hundred, then we shouldn't be doing it in thirty-two-ten for the same reasons.
Right here, somewhere, I can't.
Well, and a point of clarification here, because that was something that to, to look at, to see, to need, so it's not saying that it won't be done, it's just saying to have, make sure there's a little bit further discussion with that. Dr. Faison and Ms. Baggy, over here, will you, will you show me where we're going to be linking to the appeal form that you talked about, just so that we can show the public of the process?
So would you look at process?
Under, page one.
If you will look at process.
Okay.
And it says, using the request for reconsideration form.
So that would be hyperlink to the actual form?
Yes, we're going to actually, I don't, I'll have to talk with our team to see if it would be best to put it at the bottom of the policy or hyperlink it there, but we could put it both places. So we just want to make sure that our parents have access to that form.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of information, Dr. Faison, will, will the Board, before we vote on this as a full Board, will we have a copy of that in hand?
Yes.
Can we, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, that was the same form that we presented in Parental Rights.
Yes, sir, it has not changed.
Dr. Faison, I just want to say thank you. This, this was a question I brought up to you last week, because sometimes there's a parent who might bring up something, and at a school level, they might say, you know what, after upon review of this, we're not going to utilize this resource. And so what I had expressed to you of concern is, how are we being proactive to say, let's reevaluate as a district? Because some things you might reevaluate and say, you know, we're glad we had a change for this specific child, and other things we might reevaluate and say, maybe we can find a different text for that. And so what you are saying, just to be clear and to reiterate again, is that if a school decides to completely remove a content that the district has, based on how this policy's written, the district has the option to do the same, so that it's district-wide. So if a school says first grade, it's not appropriate for this text, we're pulling it, even as part of the Whitten-Whitem curriculum that we've already approved, like, the district can say, we're not going to utilize this text at all for first grade.
Yes, and again, anything, any Committee, when the school committees meet and they do look at review of books, that, the district level is aware of that, and just because we don't say we have to do it, doesn't mean we can't do it. And so we are involved and know what is occurring in the school with the different committees and challenges or anything that the MTAC is revealing.
As far, as far the procedures go, what you're saying is, and I'm, I'm looking down at my principal representative, and I'm trying not to call on you, because I know you're filling in for Ms. May this today, but what you're saying is, as at the school level, if my, my team deems that we're going to remove it, there is a way for her as a principal to inform the district, this is, this is the result of an appeal process, just to make you guys aware and potentially reevaluate at that time.
Actually, I don't even think she has to, I, we know, there's a process in place that the media coordinator will be informing our district media coordinator, Dr. Hudson, and she's aware of that. So she's also, maybe not technically reviewing it, but she is looking at that to make sure that everything is aligned, and if there's any question or concern that she would have, then she would then bring it at the district level for us to review as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Is that your understanding, Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would also go to our MTAC.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there's a process in place for that at the school as well.
Okay, great, thank you for your input.
Any further discussion, Committee members, about this? Questions?
Madam Chair, I'm not a Committee member, but-
Yes, sir.
-I'd be heard on a, on a technical point.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I might suggest that in the first line of Section A, that the Committee remove reference to SB forty-nine, Senate Bill forty-nine, that was the name of the bill. Ultimately, that bill became law, it became known as session law twenty-twenty-three-dash-one oh six. But I think for purposes of this proposed policy revision, you don't need to put anything in parentheses, it would read just fine, parents have a right under federal and state law.
Committee members' thoughts?
Actually, I had noticed that and wondered, so I appreciate that clarification.
To take it out.
It's imprecise, because every year there are going to be forty-nine or more Senate bills, so it would be imprecise to leave that citation, in my view.
Does it need to be added into the cross-references at the end?
No, at, at most, the cross-references at the end can, could potentially add some references to some of the new statutory citations, but as far as that Section A, my, my suggestion is to remove the parenthetical SB forty-nine.
Okay, then, Committee members, I would make a recommendation to, with the changes of taking out the SB forty-nine, to move thirty-two-ten before the Board, and again, the same caveat, similar to thirty-two-hundred, that to look into adding the reference to North Carolina State statutes, so that if we decide to do that, to do it in both of these policies.
Second.
Committee-
So there's a first and second, yes? Dr. Faison, for the good of the-
Madam Chair, I just want to get a point of clarity. So are you asking me to, you're asking the Team to add in, Ms. Bradford, can you give me the language you were asking us to add in? And then I was wondering, are you asking us to add that in, Madam Chair, before it goes to the Board? Just want some clarity.
Yes, please.
Can you give me the language again you stated?
North Carolina State statutes?
Just, so we're just adding that term, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The-
Yes, ma'am.
It was my understanding that we said we were taking this to the whole entire Board as, as is, without state standards, statutes, and we would ask the Board what their opinion was, and then we would redirect the Curriculum Committee. That is what, I wish we had a playback, because that's what I thought I understood. Did anybody else?
Thank you, thank you. I, I, I agree with Ms. Crable, so looking at the, what, what the motion in the second that was just on the table for thirty-two-ten, is taking out SB forty-nine and moving that before the Board, but with the notation of thirty-two-hundred and thirty-two-ten to potentially add, what Ms. Bradford brought up is the North Carolina State statutes and add that in reference as well, and the charge of the Curriculum Committee to kind of mull that over and kind of give feedback with that if we're going to update that in addition.
Yeah, because I don't think we can direct them, the whole Board has to direct them.
Yes, ma'am. So thirty-two-ten will be going forward with changes, and Ms. Cadetski, if you could make those changes, just crossing out the SB forty-nine, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't think you held a vote, I think you had a first and a second.
Yes, so there's a first and a second on the table, so all in favor to do that?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That's going to go forward to the Board with the changes. That brings back the parental involvement policy, and for those interested, last policy Committee, we went into depth as the changes that were implemented and the website and just the process of that, and so there was a few other changes needing to be made. I'm trying to look, because this is like fifteen-page policy. If you look, Committee members, it's on page forty-four of your packet, number twelve, Student Participation in Comprehensive Sex Health Education, as well as the last page, letter H, talking about the right to review professional development. So with that, yes, ma'am?
So I am having a little hard time with the right to, to review professional training materials, and again, I'm going back to, is this the law? And if it's not the law, then I don't think that we need to do that, the, and just wanted to get some feedback from Dr. Barnes, if we could, on doing such a, putting that in policy, that we would review all of our training materials.
Dr. Barnes, sorry.
So the bulk of our training either comes through general statute, through our Board policy, or through updates from, from the North Carolina Standard Course of Study and the, and the curriculum. I don't really see the need to have that level of oversight, simply because we know what the outcomes are for all of these. I would, it would be a, sort of like asking to see every single teacher's lesson plan every day. There's, it gets sort of granular when you get to that point, so that would be my sort of input on that.
Dr. Faison, has your hands up?
Before, Dr. Faison?
Okay.
Most companies aren't going to give you access to their material before it's adopted and purchased, so I don't know how we would be able to provide individuals with this information. So when they are coming and they're meeting with us to talk about what they're going to do, then we're walking through those informations to make that decision, whether we want to move forward with that training, and then, of course, bring it to the Board for whatever the, the cost is. After the documents have been, have been purchased, then we can go through it. I don't know, I just don't know of a company that says, I'm going to give you access to it. And if we bring individuals in to go over it, then there's a cost to that. If they are going to go with our, with parents, that's, that would be my, my understanding of what this means, is that before we can have a training, then parents can come in and view it. and view it. And I'm not sure that we can actually do that.
Well, and I like the add-in here, talking about board members have the right to access upon request, but I do understand the question about pre-purchasing, can we bring them in and not for parents? But for sure, I would like to, I mean, I don't know if it's the right policy to just to talk about board members having access to be able to review, because I know we have to approve different things. Dr. Faison, and then Ms. Bradford.
Dr. Faust touched on what I just wanted to share, that vendors, they charge us by per person, most of the time as well. So when we add people in, that is taking away from a teacher or either adding our costs. So I was just going to lift that up. And we also have certain stipulations on what we can share out if you're not in the training. So I just, that, I was going to share with Dr. Faust.
Ms. Bradford?
Two different things, just to that point. The way I read this, "Parents shall have the right to access, upon request, all district training materials used for." Doesn't say "to be used," "used for," which means it's something that you've already got. It's not that you're considering purchasing it, but the way I interpret that, and the attorney can tell me if I'm wrong, but it's not, anything you're looking at, that's not what it says. It says "used for," which is current and future.
Yes.
Tense.
So they don't provide us with that material? You know, when our vendors come in, they don't give us the PowerPoint presentations. They don't do that because we could train others without their costs. So that is not something that they normally do. So you have to attend those trainings to receive that information. And to attend those trainings, we pay per person, most of the time.
So
Ms. Barnhart?
So there's no way for a parent to find out anything about how the training goes? No way at all? Is that what you're saying?
So, I guess I'm, can you give me, I'm thinking about when we train our parents on how to use our curriculum pieces, or, I'm sorry, our teachers, on how to use our curriculum and implement those curriculum pieces. That training is done by the vendor, so we pay by the number of teachers we, or principals or whoever we are training. So if you could tell me an example, because when we're training our teachers and our administrators, we're training them on how to implement the curriculum. So maybe if it was, I'm not talking about a parent training that maybe go through the parent academy, but the trainings that we have are for our educators on how to implement the curriculum that we provide.
So this says professional development. Does that apply to all curriculum?
Anytime we bring teachers in and provide that, that's considered what's a CEU. And so that is professional development. It's just not out of the blue, we bring everyone in and say, it's an organized, agenda-driven professional development. And then if you go down to Paragraph 3, it says, "Superintendent shall provide reasonable notification to parents and students of their rights to view professional development training materials. Requests shall be granted in compliance with the applicable public records law." That then goes back to say that there is some type of training that we have to provide them, so that's why it's like, I don't understand, I'll just honestly with you, I don't understand this policy.
And Ms. Crable, how'd you end up and round out the conversation?
That's some of the points I wanted to make, too, but we said, we have to provide this to parents and students. But it's my understanding that professional development is not just curriculum-based, it's other things that teachers and staff need to do their job. So it could mean, you know, HR issues, how to handle this, or how to handle, you know, special needs, you know, EC kind of thing. So this is a lot. And then what really gave me agita was when it says, "inapplicable with public records laws," and who gets to decide, you know, what we release and what we don't release? So I don't see this as the law, and so I don't think that we need that part in there to, how is that going to help our staff and our students get better by having to pay to let parents and students look at what we do? We would have to give them access to vector, I would assume, too, right? Because that's what we use professional development. So there's a lot more that goes into this. You know, parents and students having access to our vector, you know, training, and, you know, all this kind of stuff. So I just think that H is kind of an overstep, in that we don't need it, unless there's some compelling law, or there's some compelling, you know, case law that shows that. And I have not seen that at all, other than the only legal thing that was inserted in here. So I'm not sure who wrote this, if, you know, Ms. Bradford wrote it, or if, you know, our legal counsel wrote it, or, you know, Ms. Barnhart wrote it. But yeah, they're subject to public records laws, so we may or may not release them anyway, depending on what our legal counsel says.
Madam Chair? Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple housekeeping things. The GS is missing on page 37, it's missing on page 38 twice. Just, I don't know, if you want me to give these things to whoever typed this, just to get it right before it comes before the board? And there's two more, I think. There's definitely, oh, and on page 47, it's just housekeeping stuff for grammar, under G, space missing there, under, it says GS, whatever, whatever, it just needs a space. I'd just like to get those things correct.
So in regards to this policy, committee members, do we want to see this stay in committee? Or do we want to move forward with the changes that Ms. Bradford had said, with the clerical changes, GSs?
I make a motion to move the policy forward as it is.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing no second. I would, yes, ma'am?
So the, we already have this policy, so we wouldn't really be holding it in committee, because we're already doing it.
If you look back, there is a red changes earlier on.
The growth and changes, yes.
Correct, so yes.
Yeah, okay, so the, I would like to make a motion that we move this policy forward with the changes in red and not the change, not letter H.
And I will second that. So all in favor of doing that?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Go.
That passes two to one. Committee members, that brings us to the next couple of policies, and this was
Put it here in the right, in the left, I mean?
In the right, 1310 slash 4002, on the top right, because the changes of taking that back out, and the grammatical changes that Ms. Bradford had said. So the next few policies, board meetings, I'm sorry, my cheat sheet's up here, 3210, or 2310, 2320, and 2335. This all deals with, after the board had adopted the changes to try to have more effective meetings, these policies came to attention so that we can have consistent language. So what I'd like for us to consider, and we can hold these in committee, but to, moving forward, how we want to operate with the committee, making simple changes such as denoting business days, having a notice to the board, talking about notice to the publics when agendas have to be posted. And so if you look at Policy 2300, Board Meetings, I highlighted this section, it's on page 52, number two of the policy, those following along. It says, "Upon adequate notice to all board members." I don't know if this committee wanted to see some more consistent, specific language, or just to leave it as is? And thoughts and discussion on that, committee members? Yes, ma'am.
So that's white and yellow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this policy does need to be looked at a little bit, and I think we do need to delineate between business days and calendar days, because that makes the difference on posting something on a Thursday for a meeting that's on Tuesday. If the meeting's on Tuesday and we're going with the five days, that means we have to post it a whole week ahead, which would be the same day as agenda review. And then that brings me to, we don't refer to our agenda review meetings anywhere in this policy. My guess is they would be, or my recommendation would be that they would be specially called meetings, and if so, we need to call them out in there. And that could possibly change our timings. So I think we do need to address the, what kind of meetings our general, our agenda review meetings are, and then what kind of information gets discussed there.
I mean, I would agree from the discussion prior, specially called meetings, to have agenda review on there. It's not listed, but we can easily do that, coming back next month, to have agenda review on there. But as far as the, do we want to try to delineate, "upon adequate notice to all board members"? Do we want to have more specific timeframe? My recommendation on all these policies will be to be consistent, to utilize business days, excluding holidays. But beyond the feedback of adding, for this first one, adding agenda review and potentially looking at the "upon adequate notice," any other thoughts and concerns, Ms. Bradford?
I remember when we did the ad hoc, that I wanted to delineate the agenda review. And Mr. Vogel, did you not say that you didn't need to, that it, because it was covered under specialty, specially called meetings? I can't remember.
Madam Chair, I don't, if I can address that, I don't recall whether I stated that, but I do think an agenda review meeting, as Ms. Crable said, would be under the category of specially called meetings.
I'm fine adding it, I just didn't want to run afoul of anything. Adequate is an ambiguous word, we could hone that down.
So then, looking at the next policy, public participation at board meetings, I had put this on here. If you look at the first on number 55, it says, "Six working," cross that out to business days, comma, "excluding holidays." So just to be consistent, again, that was the only change that I saw there, potentially, because that's talking to public, members of the public, adding something to our agenda?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So that kind of goes to the point I was talking about, is we reference in policy a meeting that we have not ever even defined. So I think that before we can say, prior to an agenda review meeting, we need to have a little more detail on when we hold our agenda review meetings. Like when we looked at, back on Policy 2300, when we looked at, you know, interim meetings are held on the third Tuesday, we don't have any place in there that our agenda review meetings are held a week prior to regularly scheduled. So I like the fact that we can say six days, but it will have to look at Policy 2320 at the same time, because in that one, it says five days. So we just need to be consistent on how many days, and I would like not to change this Policy 2310 until we get Policy 2300, board meetings kind of shored up.
I'm fine with making, I mean, I don't want to make the motion now, but I'm fine with making the motion to keep all these in committee with these, coming back with these suggested changes we're discussing today, that's the whole point. So looking at the 2320, so the other feedback that I wrote down is that potentially adding language to add an agenda review meeting. But if we move on to 2320, which is in compliance with open meeting laws, I, under notice, I had typed up some suggestions for us to consider, is, obviously, it says that we'll be in compliance with the law, but to expand the language of the law so that everybody understands what that looks like. So regular board meetings require five-day notice to the Board of Education members, along with 48 hours' notice to the public, and all other types of meetings will require a minimum of 48 hours' notice to the public of the posted agenda. Yes?
So the, I don't know the particular policy off the top of my head, I could look it up real quick, but we already have a policy that we would have to change as well, that says we notify the public of posted items when we notify the board.
That's the next policy we're going to talk about.
It, yeah, but the, I don't know that, I don't know that it's that one.
It's in here.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so I just, I think we need to make sure of that, because, yeah, Policy 2335 does say that the same time, so we would have to make the changes simultaneously, so that we don't, and I didn't want to bring that up until we got to 2335, I didn't want to jump ahead.
Thank you.
So the, I would be fine in making the change to business days, because we don't work on non-business days with that. But that will also change, you know, the backup, you know, of when we do. So basically, one of these policies has us submitting information 13 days prior, like two weeks prior to the regular board meeting. So we just have to
That's to get something on the agenda.
I know, but we just have to, but that's the same with us, too. I mean, our, because we have the spreadsheet that Ms. Buie gave us, when it has the, you know, the dates and everything on it, that we need to, we have this all laid out, but our policy doesn't match it, so that's
I know, this, this, this is the point of the discussion today, my apologies for not making that more clear, is pulling out these policies to understand that we do need to have some consistent language. Ms. Bradford, what was your thoughts on this?
If we're gonna, I had in my memory that we didn't need to delineate the agenda review, because it came under, it fell under special meetings. I'm fine doing that. So, but if we're going to do that, would we not add that where you've got notice, regular board meetings? Would you not put notice and add that there, too?
I'll make a consideration of that.
I think you would. Anywhere it references some kind of requirement there that has a time limit on, it should coincide. Be consistent.
So what you're saying is if we add a definition for agenda review, to have the specific notification about agenda review?
Yeah, it just needs to go in every place that you're talking about notice and days and so on. They just need to be consistent. If it's five days, fine, if it's six days, five, it still needs to be the same.
And then, and looking at the last policy in this kind of bunch, to group them together to review some things, is the advanced delivery meeting materials. You'll notice the business days excluding holidays, and then the striking at the same time distributed to board, so that board members have access, prior to the public having access. That was brought up a concern by a couple different committee, not committee members, board members. And then 48 hours, again, keeping that consistency, if it's 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, for the rest, to have that access there as well.
So I don't understand why we're making this change? Because some board members don't want the public to see it when we see it? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's the question of, should the board members have access before the public? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this was put in by our committee?
This is for discussion, and this was one of the things that was brought out of discussion in the ad hoc and conversations. And so it's, I'm bringing it for all of us to discuss. No changes are being made. My recommendation is going to be to keep Policy 2300, 2310, 2320, and 2335 in committee, and readdressing some of the change, some of the things that we just heard today, looking at expanding having an agenda review definition, adding that into the notice, changing to business days. We can go back through and look at, make sure. It's everywhere, business days, not just working days. And then, yeah, 48 hours.
And then, oh.
But that's my recommendation.
I care if that was a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, my motion is to keep those four in committee.
Okay.
Motion, second.
Yeah, I just wanted to add in there, so Ms. Bradford and I are welcome to give input on what those look like, right?
Yes.
To you, okay. And then, so as you're thinking about this, as we're all thinking about it, I think we need to really tighten up a little bit on what the agenda review is used for. Because agenda review, to me, implies we only talk about things that are going to be on the agenda. We don't add other things to it. And if we want to add other topics, then we should stop the meeting, break, start a new meeting. Because agenda reviews, we're doing much more than agenda reviews at our agenda review meetings.
Thank you for your feedback. So there's a first and a second on the floor, to keep those four policies, 2300, 2310, 2320, and 2335 in committee. All in favor to do that?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes. We have reached our time, so the last policy on the table is board committees. There was two changes. Two that was to remove the EDI committee description, and then to expand, there was no language for the curriculum committee. And I had forwarded you guys the language for the curriculum committee change, but with that, I would make a motion to move this forward before the board with the curriculum committee change description that Dr. Faison provided you guys, and I had sent it via email. She get it, she got it after, she got, excuse me, she got it to me after I posted the agenda, so I didn't want to change. Yes, ma'am? Okay. So again, it's, you'll see the removal of the EDI committee, and then there's going to be language to provide for the curriculum committee, because that was not in here originally. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I am looking at the, a couple things as we're, that may come up if we're going to move it straightforward, you know, to, straight to the board. The, on page 65, 66, 67, 68, there are references to student members on all of these, on committees on those pages. There is also a reference on page 69 that we will that we will use the universal application, which hasn't been released yet. So, I'm just wondering, could we somehow either get that released, or we, we do something with that? Because people are waiting to apply for committees.
I think that would be something to go before the Board, and something rightfully so, that can be brought up again.
So, do I bring it up at the Board meeting?
I would think, yeah.
Okay.
Because we can't, I can't, we can't make that decision as a policy committee.
So, what was your motion again, I'm sorry?
I make a motion to move forward the policy that has the EDI Committee struck, and the language inserted of the Curriculum Committee that Dr. Faison provided.
I remember my last one. Is it, while we're getting that ready, is there a way that we can, does, would anyone oppose putting these in alphabetical order? So, not, so that we can find, so that we have, like, you know, Finance Committee would come, you know, before, if EDI was there, EDI would have been first. Count, you know, just put them in that order, so people can find them more easily?
I'm fine with that, are you fine with that? So, I will amend my motion to the suggested changes, as I said, but then also utilizing alphabetical order in the descriptions of the committee makeup. And I'm going to charge Ms. Kadetsky with doing that. Thank you very much. There's a first and, oh, that's, I made a motion, is there a second to my amended motion? Okay, so, any further discussion on that? All in favor to the amended motion, which is to remove the EDI, add the curriculum language, as well as make everything in alphabetical order? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes three to zero. So, that, prior to adjournment, I'm just going to do a recap really quickly. 3200 is on the top left, no changes made. On the top right, 3210, 1310 slash 4002, 2230. On the bottom left, Policies Held in Committee, 2300, 2310, 2320, 2335. And in the bottom right, New Policies for Second Reading, is 7205. Anybody need a repeat? That brings us to adjournment, and I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.